Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, February 18th City Council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Condon.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Mahavik.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Glab.
Here.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Mayor Jett.
Here. At this time, I'd like to ask Ben Miller from Troop 459, who is also responsible for the free little library outside of the rec center, which is a give a book, take a book program, so I appreciate that, but he's going to start us off with the pledge this evening, so. Take it away, Ben.
Please call me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ben, appreciate it. At this time, I'll open up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment at this time? Sir? Who state your name and address for the public.
My name is Scott Kikekinnall. I'm the Water Resources Specialist for the McHenry County Department of Planning and Development, and I live at 4622 Dean Street in Woodstock. We're here tonight to raise awareness and ask for your participation in the updating of the county's Water Resources Action Plan, which is also known as the RAP. Water is necessary for all life, health, and economic opportunity. McHenry County is very fortunate to have numerous streams, numerous lakes, and wetlands that provide rich habitat, recreational opportunities, and natural beauty, but we are also very fortunate to have multiple types of groundwater aquifers which supply all of our drinking water in the county. The scale and quality of these water resources are unique and contribute to an attractive quality of life for our residents, businesses, and visitors. However, our water resources are also vulnerable and need to be protected or restored so they may continue providing the benefits we depend on. In the years to come, water will be one of the most important issues facing our region, nation, and world. The health of our water resources in McHenry County will shape the future of our communities. It's important to remember that people will not invest in homes or businesses if they do not have access to safe, clean, reliable, and affordable water resources. Over the next year, McHenry County will be updating the RAP, which was originally completed in 2009. The updated RAP will be a comprehensive guide designed to educate decision-makers from the county, municipalities, businesses, and individuals about water resources, the potential threats to those resources, and the best management practices that can protect or restore them. The McHenry County Department of Planning and Development and the Department of Health will lead the update along with input from a RAP task force. The task force will include representatives from the county, municipalities, townships, and other government agencies, businesses, nonprofits, other organizations, and residents. The plan will draw from water resource experts from across the state, the scientific studies the county has invested in over the past decade, the experience of county staff, and input from our task force members. The RAP task force meetings are scheduled for the second Wednesday of the month from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and they'll be held at the McHenry County Administration Building. Our first meeting is scheduled for March 13th and will have a meeting every month for one year thereafter. We are here to ask that representatives, including elected officials or staff from every municipality, participate in the task force to ensure that your specific water resource issues are addressed. Municipalities can also get credit for their NPDS MSW permits through their participation in the task force. This is an exciting opportunity to learn from leading experts in the field and to help shape the future of water resources in McHenry County. We look forward to seeing you in the task force.
And as a member, as your county board district member, representative at the county board level, also a member of the Planning and Development Committee and on the RAP task force, I'm just here to kind of echo exactly what you heard from Mr. Kikekinnall. McHenry is the largest community in District 4. I want you to be a leader. I want you to participate. This is extraordinarily important, and we decided that we, as elected officials, would come and visit every single one of the municipalities that paid attention and actually participated so that you know it really does mean something and it is important. So we're asking Mayor Jett to always ensure that we do have a representative from the city of McHenry at one of those monthly meetings.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate your time. Is there anyone else in the crowd that would like to make a public comment at this time? See none. At this time, I'd like to move on to Item 5, Consent Agenda. Is there any items that the council would like to pull for separate consideration? See none. I'm looking for a motion to approve Items 5A through 5H. Alderman Curry.
So moved.
Second. Alderman Santi.
I will second the motion.
Discussion on these items? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Condon.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is 6A, Discussion and Possible Action on a Proposed Ordinance Amending References to Specific Gender Within the City of McHenry Municipal Code. Attorney McCarthy, turn this over to you.
Okay, so since the last meeting, what I did was I went through the city code as best as I could in that two-week process, and I modified it as I indicated in the draft that I sent out. I only received one comment from actually two members of the board, and it was the same comment, and that is, before there were edits to the code, there's a reference to the gender by definition, and what it says is it's a broad brush that says, "Any reference to masculine needs the opposite with regard to females, corporations, sole proprietorships." And so the comment from both members was to, well, one was to modify that, and one was to delete it. So the only reason I left it in at all, it serves no purpose once we caught all of the edits. I think I got close, but I certainly could have missed some. So if we're comfortable in the draft that's provided to us, we will be modifying the code through code codification this spring anyway, so they can have a double check.
So, thank you very much. It was a little late, so it was. But I talked about this a year ago, and that's why I brought it up again at the last meeting. So the thing, you know, two weeks later, we have this change to me means the world, and I suspect it will also to the two other women that will come after me that will sit on this council, as well as every woman that comes after me. And I, you know, the term "good old boys" network, I think, has applied to a lot of government positions for a long time. I never felt that way on this council, but the wording of that section that I brought to everyone's attention on gender said that females will be referred to as in the masculine gender was offensive when I became aware of that, and so I think all we're doing is doing the right thing. And I know there was some issue whether or not the state would allow, well, the state's already done this. They've made that change. And I've also heard, well, other communities haven't done it. Great, let's be the leaders in this. That's great. I'm proud to say that all of you agree with me, and we can move forward, and women get the respect that they deserve. And so I appreciate taking that section out that refers to females being addressed in the male gender and changing the word from alderman to council in general, and I really appreciate that. I know it was work, but to me, it was worthwhile, I believe, codification as it goes on. If there is anything that was missed, we'll address that. And I know that we were going to do some of this later on, but it can't be soon enough because I really welcome the fact that the two women that are going to be coming to sit at this council in May will be able to be recognized in the female gender right off the bat, so thank you.
Alderman Curry?
Yeah, just, and I'm, Attorney McCarthy mentioned that I'm the one that said, just delete that Section 2-45 because I don't think it's needed. And if there is one that's, you know, something missed somewhere, you'll catch it in the codification. In fact, when you read, when you read the administrative code in some, in one case, all the references were she, and I guess if you read the gender section, that would fit totally out of line to even have that in there at that time. So, you know, it lasted that long. I don't think the world's going to end if we miss one, you know, for the next six months or a year, whatever it is, you know, we'll catch it and try and just get it. I had a couple other things, and one was I had a question. I don't remember, maybe I missed it, but is there any, probably not, but is there any requirement that we reference the actual electoral title somewhere in the definitions, just?
I don't think so, because if I was going to reference it, I would retype exactly what's in the Illinois Election Code, which is going to trump ours anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, my position would be home rule doesn't, you can't change the election code because that's changing your form of government, so you have to comply with the election code. It doesn't matter what we say, so.
And then the other, the third thing that I had in my back-and-forth with you and the city administrator was, there was a reference in their section, I forget the number now, 2-145 or something like that, about an ESTA coordinator, which we don't have, and is that still in there? Are we going to take that out this time, or are we going to do that?
On page 10, I actually deleted it.
You did take that out.
I deleted the whole section.
I missed that. All right.
You know, the other thing is, if you look at page 10, if anybody's looking at it, there were things in the code, I made some corrections for obvious typographical errors or whatever, but under emergency services, the next section refers to organization of a different entity, and it says, "Terms of Office Deleted in Its Entirety." I don't even know what that means because I didn't go back in history to see what was deleted, but I left it in there because I figured under code codification, they'll do more thought into what that phrase actually meant, and that wasn't what I was drafted to do, so I didn't do it. Because the next phrase, "Chairperson," same thing, deleted in its entirety. That was done by some other city council. I'm not sure what that means. But I just left it in because, again, it ought to be read the way it's written instead of tinkered with without knowing exactly where it's coming from. So, other than that, the only edits I made were some obvious typos.
Thank you. Alderman, that's?
Yeah. Alderman kindly referenced state statutes that changed. Are you talking HB 1010?
I think she means the liquor code, or was it liquor, the one I sent out. I sent out an example of where the state actually edited one of its chapters in the state statutes using exactly the same type of modifications I used, which is where I got my idea from.
You know, the only thing I'm getting at is, you know, this was brought up, like Alderman, sorry, Alderman Condon had brought up a year ago, and the thing is, is if anybody has a recollection, I did bring up the fact that we could do a resolution, and I would support a resolution that we sent to the state to change the ordinance or the state statute, of which everybody ignored. And I just want to say that HB 1010, which was approved at the end of August of last year and went into effect at the beginning of the year, has changed my status as a public speaker to a public speaker. And however, they still reference Alderman. If we'd sent that resolution, possibly that might have been looked at at the time that they changed that, and maybe we wouldn't even be having this discussion reflecting it off the state statutes completely. And maybe then in the election and everything else, it would have been according to state statutes, you know? So the election code would have been changed and everything else had they looked at that. But as, looking at HB 1010, they still reference Alderman, and it's a shame because, like I said, that resolution might have changed what Alderman Condon wanted to have changed in the first place. And again, I really don't, doesn't matter what, you know, what the titles are, I really don't have a problem on where it be, so I can support whatever way that the rest of the council would go with that, and I'll leave it at that.
Alderman Condon?
Well, I'd like to differ. I suspect that you would be offended if it was, if you, as the other men in here, were called alderwomen. I think you would, and that's why I am upset that a resolution to the state, I'm not saying that I'm not going to follow through with the county, state, and every other level of government, however, I'm on this board, I'm on this council, so yes, it is important for me that our codes refer to women as women.
I just say we missed the opportunity, is all I'm saying, so.
Well, if you're so concerned about it, then you do it. I will do it. I will pursue it, but in the meantime, I want it to be addressed as women, as alderwoman, and I wanted Bobby and Sue to be able to be addressed as alderwoman. And that could only, that, by bringing this topic up, I was, I got confirmation from our attorney that yes, I could be addressed as alderwoman, and if you had concern about that, you brought up the state. I checked with the state, and there wasn't any issue with us changing our code to allow us to be called alderwomen.
Okay. And I'm glad you shared that with us because it's never been brought up before. And again, my concern was always that we don't follow state statute, and that was it, and that's all I'm saying, you know, that.
But you keep on referring to that it's no big deal.
No, no, I'm just saying that I don't have a problem.
I don't think any one of you, nor would I want to disrespect you by calling you alderwomen. I deserve the same courtesy. Thank you. Sorry.
All right. Anyone else have any comments? Questions?
So if there's a motion, the motion would be to adopt the ordinance as proposed, deleting Section 1.2, definition of gender.
Alderman Condon?
I will make that motion, however, can we do that if this is just, oh, this is an action item, I apologize. Okay. I will make that motion as just presented by Attorney McCarthy.
Second, Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment on this item? I apologize.
Thank you.
That was her comment. That was similar, by the way.
And I will say thank you as well. The great legacy of the lead, Jerry.
All right. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman, Alderman Condon.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thanks, Jerry, for keep us on our toes and getting your comments.
Thank you for allowing me to.
All right, next item on the agenda is Item 6B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Appointments to the City's Ethics Commission or Entering Into a Governmental Agreement with McHenry County to Act Upon Ethics Complaints. This is, this is an open discussion by council first. Actually, do you want to go ahead and present this first on?
Yeah, I'll do a little bit for everybody's benefit. So back in around 2004 or so, the state passed the Gift Ban Act in the common vernacular, and the Gift Ban Act also included prohibited activities by local political officials, political officials. All the local governments were required to adopt rules relating to that. The Attorney General, or municipal, I don't remember which, put out a forum set of ordinances. All towns in our county at least adopted the required rules. The rules require the appointment of a ethics commissioner, ethics hearing officer, and an ethics commission, and no town, to my knowledge, has done so. I think there was an effort at the beginning to announce that some boards that, some committees that existed would have dual roles, one as ethics commissioners and then the other as whatever other role they fulfilled, but that was never followed through and certainly isn't followed through today with regard to any council we've talked to. So we actually took it upon ourselves to contact the state's attorney and the, who was it?
Jack Franks?
Jack Franks. And we came up with the concept, because the county is currently revising its county ethics rules more intensely, but certainly overlapping what the cities and villages are required to fulfill. They'll be done with that early spring or mid-spring, we hope, and at that time, the attorney, or the state's attorney suggested or agreed that perhaps they would form their ethics rules by allowing municipalities to opt into those rules, abide by those rules by agreement, and utilize the county's ethics hearing officer and hearing commission, and the hearing officer would be the HR person at the county, to fulfill the obligations that cities and villages are required to fulfill. That way, every town is creating their own ethics commissions that rarely, if ever, have any duties, and when it hits them, it's not, they're not hitting them cold without any experience. The county gets four or five cases a year through its ethics commission, so it has some experience factor, which is good, and it's certainly more objective than handling these internally through political setups of the ethics commissions. So, everything is positive as far as that's concerned. It'll just take a couple of months to implement, so my point here for the discussion, one of the points is, do you want to wait for that possibility, likelihood, or do you want to simply move forward as a group, establish a commission, and make the appointment of a hearing officer and be done with it in an imminent place?
Alderman Curry?
Yeah, a couple of comments on that. Our code, there's actually two parts. There's an ethics commission, and there's also supposed to be an ethics advisor.
Right.
And so I guess that could be one of the commissioners if we had that, but I think it's a separate entity though. So with the county, if we were to go that route, would there be an ethics advisor then sitting at the county that somebody could call?
That's according to Jack or the state's attorney, Pat, it was going to be the hearing, the human resources person of the county.
Would be the, you said the hearing officer.
They're the advisor.
They're the advisor.
Bringing this up, looking at the case. Advisor.
Thank you.
It's just one.
Alderman Condon?
I think that's great to use an outside source like the county, and, you know, one suggestion might be that, and I'm fine with waiting until that's established. If there's an emergency, we can convene and figure out something else, but in the meantime, I think that's, you know, it's great to utilize the county. I'm just wondering if our HR, if she might want to also coordinate, or just?
oversee it?
Oversee and have a connection with the county, just, you know, on a local level. That might be a suggestion that I would, I would make.
And I won't let this go on too long. If it doesn't happen by, you know, April or May, then we'll readdress it.
Yeah.
Bring it back.
And they're working on it pretty.
Yeah, they are.
Pretty heavily right now. And I also agree that, you know, I talked to them, this kind of started by me calling Jack Franks and saying, hey, you know, I think the county, I don't want to be in put in a situation of being on the electoral board, you know, which recently just happened. I think someone else should be handling these issues, and I think at the county level, and it just so happened that they're working on this whole thing to where, you know, now this kind of got brought up, where the opt-in idea was brought up. So I think, I think this was, in my eyes, I think this is the best option. Alderman?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up that a couple times in discussions with some of my constituents, that they brought up, they felt uneasy about being outside the county because none of the people that they have there are within the city, and I thought, well, if we wanted to leave it within the city, we could always ask for applications and have a circuit clerk judge appoint the people, and that, again, would take all the improprieties away. However, some of the things that Attorney McCarthy brought up on discussion, I think I agree with even more heartedly, and I would probably go back and discuss that with those constituents of some of the things that were brought up, because I truly believe that maybe that is the best way, a little bit of extra experience and everything else, rather than being stone-cold, goes a long way.
Alderman Santi?
What Alderman Curry brought up regards to the ethics advisor, that's a non-voting position on that commission.
It hasn't, right.
And we look at the, look at transitioning to the county level for ethics commission and also the electoral board.
Well, that was a bigger topic.
Yeah.
That came in during the conversation because, you know, the mayor and I pointed out how uncomfortable it is. You have someone who's on your board usually, either in the crowd objecting or vice versa, being objected to, and it's, it always gets criticized by someone that it's politically related, the decision or the process or whatever is political, and it is. So that would remove that, but they weren't willing to swallow that yet. That was a bigger topic.
So, that's in discussion at the county level?
We certainly brought it up, and they agreed it's an issue, and that it'd be a good way to deal with it. They're just have enough on their plate with the ethics.
So ethics is first, and then potentially electoral, maybe a few more months down the way.
That should probably be handled in the legislature, but that may take a long time.
Okay. And then the only other committee or commission I can think of is something I guess would, after discussion, would staff would stay locally, would we tear down the committee? Something that we would keep here where it becomes an appointment wherever that arises in the future. All right. Thank you very much.
So we'll keep you advised on it. That's just for discussion.
No, I have no other.
No.
Moving on to Item 7, is discussion-only items. I wanted to bring in the video gaming discussion, because I know there's a few council members that's been wanting to discuss this, and I think it's a good time to do that. At the same time, I wanted to bring in the discussion of vape shops, you know, and I just seen a couple pop up recently, and my concerns are, you know, I did put a social media post out there to ask questions of what people's thoughts were, and it's interesting on their comments, but I wanted to kind of bring it up to council and see where you guys all stand and go stand, to see, you know, what your vision on all that is, so. I'll open up for discussion for gaming first, okay? And then, David, you have some, you know?
The page.
All right. So, any discussion on video gaming? Alderman Curry?
I'll jump on there. Yeah, I think we definitely need to do something. I know just about every municipality around is wrestling, or has wrestled with this issue to some degree. Some have passed some sort of restrictions, some have not, or one has not. Just a couple of things just to mention. I looked at the last years of revenues, the report from the state this afternoon, and over the last year, you know, the city of McHenry is, if I look at the tax revenue that we bring in, which is an indication of how much activity we have, we're 12th in the state. 12th. McHenry is the 80th-largest city in the state, so that kind of tells you what's going on with video gaming in the city of McHenry. I mean, we're pretty much a gambling mecca, or at least we're becoming one. We have 40 establishments, 180 terminals, more than some whole counties. In fact, you know, you look at Rockford, it's six times our size. They only have two and a half times as many establishments and terminals as we do, so we have certainly unleashed it, for good or bad, depending on which side of this equation you're looking at. I personally think it's not so good, but we are, we are right out, to talk about being out in front, 12th in the state. Yeah, a couple other comments that I had. I think we need to, I think we need to limit, we need to limit it, and we talked about this issue before, and there were some things thrown out. We never got to, the biggest problem comes in defining, defining what, for example, a video gaming parlor is versus a restaurant, for example, that happens to have video gaming. But that definition of, whatever that definition is of video gaming parlor, it's one of those, you know it when you see it type of things, you know? I threw out this before, and I wrote it down again, which is, I would define it as, you know, 50% or more of their income, and make them report it to us. We can, we can keep it confidential, some, we can redact it if somebody's looking for competitive information, we can, we can handle that. But I just throw that out there. That didn't have to be the, you know, it's not the endpoint, but it's just a start point for me that that would define those video gaming parlor type outfits. And then I would create, and we talked about this before, create a video gaming parlor liquor license and limit the number of liquor licenses in the city of McHenry of that type, so that that is our, basically, that's our method for limiting it. And then, you know, there's some other things that, this is me personally. I think in any new restaurants or whatever, we ought to actually have a requirement. Some other municipalities have done this, a requirement of an actual partition. I mean, just a piece of tape going across is not effective. It's supposed to be a partition, and of course, anytime you put something in law, people find ways around it. And I think the idea that was supposed to be a solid partitioned off area, and I would like to see that. I know we've got a lot of orgies that are, you know, people out there right now that we're not going to go back and, you know, change probably because that would be, create a problem, you know. But for new ones, we certainly could. I think I would, I think we should look at signage as well. And, you know, it comes down to what do you want your city to look like? And I said this before, that, you know, it, you know, your streets or your municipality, how does it, how does it go downhill or how does it die? It dies little by little, or it gets a reputation little by little. It doesn't happen anymore neither. And I think when you look, when you step back and you look at us being 12th in the state and only 80th in size, that kind of indicates that we have an issue. And then, you know, I know that we don't have any, but I know that there are some areas that have what you'd call non-traditional spots, and I would not be supportive of those as well. Thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
A couple of things that we had, again, discussed before, and I know, David, you brought up before in the past that there was probable issues with litigation if we were to use like square footage and floor space and reduce things that way or limit things that way. Has any of that changed in the last couple of years?
Probably my opinion, no, I think that's good.
Okay. But you said it might run into issues if we did something. I believe at the time it was referring to what Crystal Lake was doing with limiting it to actually quantity of machines where, you know, you could have...
Right, so you can't, you know, we know we don't have any authority over gaming. We can't, to even suggest you're regulating gaming in any respect is probably risky. What you're regulating is liquor licenses. If you want to create a liquor license, that gets into the difficulty of defining it. And then you're thereby, you've done it. Now, whether that's going to be challenged or not, I don't know, but that's one avenue you could take. We, I've drafted ordinances in this town for square footage requirements, full kitchen requirements, and for moratoriums in general on liquor licenses. I mean, the best thing you have is to just deny the liquor license. You don't have an obligation to issue a liquor license. So, if somebody peers before you and you don't like their proposal, just say no. We've had this discussion before, and for whatever reason, that's not an avenue that the city council has chosen to take. To take one of these others that Scott suggests is a certainly viable thing to do. It's just more difficult to word and probably riskier.
And I agree, we had talked about this before too, having a number of liquor license per category. We've always had an open-ended amount. Our thought was, you know, we don't want to limit anybody from wanting to come in here. And now we've reached a point too, maybe we do have to limit that. So, I would be willing to look at that. And then I also agree, the non-traditional things that, Mayor, you've brought up that you get requests for almost on a daily or weekly basis for things, I think that's got to be looked at too. Because if, if you're not a traditional liquor-selling, liquor-pouring facility or haven't been in the last 20 years, I don't think that's some, I think that's something that's really got to be looked at as well going forward for this. Because I think, once you do one, you open up that whole door for whatever the locations. And you can share those that have asked you, those non-traditional type places from salons and things like that, or, you know, dentist's office or whatever it might be. It's amazing the requests that you get. So, that, that to me, along with the following the state statutes or the gaming boards regulations as much as possible, and what we can do to keep those numbers limited, I think we need to do that. I think we really need to either have a number of licenses or some type of classification that has a number on it. And once we reach that number, we're there. I think it's definite, I know, Scott, your numbers are great. Maybe there's a lot, your numbers are based on dollars, so maybe there's just a lot of dollars here in town when people gamble. But I mean, it's, it's something that is definitely visible when you look at it. And that's the biggest thing that I hear from constituents is that we have enough. We have more than enough. We have the establishments that, when we first started this, it was to go after those businesses that were already existing to help them maintain and grow their business. And a lot of them were on their, as they said to us at the time, their last opportunity to keep their business open and viable. And now those businesses, whether they have, you know, at the time, I think we had 40-something, and not all of them took part in it. And those businesses, if you talk to them, the ones that did talk to us, they have been made better by having this. So, I think we've accomplished our goal, what we set out to at that time. And now, it's kind of been like the Wild West is, if you talk to the gaming people, they view McHenry as an area that you can go in and no one's going to say no to you. So, I think those are all things we need to look at.
So, are you talking about having a limit on licenses for parlors or just in gaming?
Liquor.
Or liquor?
Per our liquor classifications, like other municipalities have that. We've never had that.
So, let's say we have 45...
I think it's something we should look at.
Yeah, so if we have 45 licenses, and let's say we have all 45, then you've got someone coming in for a $2 million restaurant or whatever. How, you know, staff needs to be directed as far as, especially Doug, to know what to say, what not to say. And I think that comes in, that's tough because, you know, what are we going to get for new businesses like Miller Point or the Central Wastewater Treatment Plan or any other open properties? I think it puts us in a bind.
Well, I think that's where you come into having, making sure that those classifications are set up with not only what's existing today, but you do have an opportunity for growth. And then, as we do with anything else, you have an opportunity to make a variance on that or an addition to. You know, if you have that opportunity, I don't think it's going to sway people from not coming. Well, when you say no to the swans, I guess it could be...
Yeah, I mean, okay.
Alderman?
I agree pretty much with Alderman Curry brought up and as far as Alderman Schaefer. To some degree, however, you know, everybody, when we've had these discussions, there's always been the video parlors that they don't like. But you know what's more interesting, and I haven't reviewed it in the last year, to be honest with you, the breakdowns. But it seems like the biggest revenue getters for gambling are these parlors that are very quiet. And those that truly like to play the game, the games take, and they like the quietness or something, the comfort is to go into those places. And, you know, it's just a very difficult decision to say, what do we limit? And, yes, we have to be careful of our, the city's reputation. But like Mayor Jett brought up, you know, I mean, somebody wants to bring in a $2 million business or whatever, are we going to say no? Or what do we tell staff? We definitely want to open them up with open arms on certain businesses and not even suggest that the council may say no.
The biggest problem is, you know, direction by staff, so.
Sure. Like I said, it really makes it difficult. Because like I say, yes, the revenue's nice, but more than anything else is, Alderman Schaefer brought up, what a lot of his constituents say, and that's what we're here for, is to create those type of businesses that our constituents want. And by use, it seems like they want these parlors. So, I mean, where do we draw the line? Now, granted, I mean, if it had been up to me, I think we would have probably drew the line a long time ago. I mean, if we could have just arbitrarily just set it up with the video gaming, yeah, you could have your liquor license, but no video gaming. Would have rather had that. I mean, yes, I talked to some of the businesses the first year or two, it really helped them out. But then as it expanded, you know, let's say you had 30% more establishments over a year that opened up. There's not 30% more revenue coming in in those machines. And so, those existing businesses that had it have dwindled as far as their return that they were getting out of their machines. Now, again, I have tracked it, you know, month to month, year to year even. It would be interesting, maybe, maybe staff, if we ever have another discussion on these video gaming, or maybe just relate it back to staff this next week, that we look at, let's say, the last, well, how many years have we had video gaming done? Five, six? Whatever, whatever it's been. How about taking a look at the revenue?
The records go back to 2012 on the gaming side.
Okay. The revenue, and what the increase over the years have been year by year, and how many, what's the increase of establishments over the year by year? Because it would be interesting, as those establishments increase, are, is the gaming dollars actually increasing that much for the amount of establishments?
Yeah, our revenues have gone up. Just so the public knows, we're getting, you know, we're budgeting about $600,000 in revenues to our side for gaming.
But what was it two years ago? You know, I mean, that's...
350 or so.
I'm sorry?
350,000.
350, so.
It's growing.
It leaps and bounds. But how many, what percentage of establishments has that been in the last two years too? I don't know, you know. I just think that's something that we need to look at as far as the breakdowns. So, we get a better picture of these video gaming places coming in. Is it helping us that much? Or is it hindering the businesses that already exist? And that's one thing, you don't want to see too many, too many more gaming establishments coming in if they're going to hurt the existing businesses we have. You know, as far as, the whole intent that we first passed this was just to help out, like Alderman Schaefer brought up, I think the VFW was one of them. There were several of them that were, you know. Let's just say it was to direct straits with some businesses due to the economy and everything else at the time. And so, like I said, I know it's a hard decision, but I think the more angles we look at it and the more information we get, the better decision we can make.
Alderman Curry?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, the comparison actually wasn't on my, I didn't mention the money. The comparison with Rockford, for example, is one establishment and one non-establishment. I don't remember, I don't remember what Rockford's actual tax revenue was. Ours, at least in the latest 12 months, has shown $463. I mean, that's a lot to show, but our, what we did. What we're getting, Henry, it was like nine point, roughly 9.3 million dollar net income coming off of the terminals in McHenry and about $112 million wager. Now, of course, that's, you know, you wager, you win, you wager, you, you know. But the net is 9.3 million dollars, and that's what the tax revenue is based off of. And of course, the state's getting 30% of that, and we're getting like 5%. So, that was, it was based, but the comparison with Rockford was based on just size. They're about six times our population. They have two and a half times as many terminals as we do. We have 40 establishments, 180 terminals. They have 97 establishments, 463 terminals. So, roughly two and a half times more terminals, but a population that's six times our size. So, I just think the comparison is kind of drastic, and you've got it that way. And back on the, you know, the original reasons, I understand, I wasn't here when it was done, but it was to help out the existing businesses. You notice, I didn't talk about restaurants coming in. That's not where my focus was, and I wouldn't go that direction, which is why I talked about a separate liquor license for a video gaming parlor to try to control, if you will, that growth. So, that's why, that's why I mentioned it that way, rather than just... And the problem with us, yes, we've always had the ability to turn down a liquor license. But I know from my own standpoint, it's harder for me to say no this time and yes that time and then no that time again, when I don't have any, call it criteria, if you will, that's written, that's established. And I realize it's not easy. It's easy to say, hard to do. But I just think it's certainly, it speaks more to, to me at least, as to what, I can look somebody straight in the face and say, this is why. This is why I said no, is because this is the definition, in this case, of a video gaming parlor. Versus, I'm just going to say no because I think that's what it is.
So, that was the point, I think, that was the point of the full restaurant restriction. So, that you would say, well, we're not going to issue, an example would be, we're not going to issue any more liquor licenses to an establishment that serves food unless it has a full bar, I mean, a full kitchen.
Kitchen.
And so, that, there may be some parlors that put in a full kitchen. I don't know. Maybe it's worth it. But that's a big number to put in. And maybe they'll get around it that way. But that was the thought process at that moment in time, a couple of years ago.
Alderman Santin?
I too am for looking at some type of liquor licensing slash gaming, you know, license that's, has some type of gaming guidelines to it. And, you know, something has occurred over the last three months here, right in front of this council, is we've had two new businesses come before us with a liquor and food establishments. And, not that they volunteered it, but just a basic question from us to them, would they be willing to, you know, would they, would they be willing to allow us to, not install the gaming machines for the first year or two? And those two businesses were comfortable looking at that, you know, that restriction? Does that keep the number at a certain level? You know, I really can't answer that. But, you know, so, so they're willing to make, you know, they're willing to make an investment here and knowing that, that, you know, that portion of their, of their income is something that they're going to have to pre-plan and budget for as they establish themselves as a, as a local place that's going to be able to build on their business by how they perform as a, you know, restaurant slash bar on their own without, without that option for the first, you know, potentially two years. And then also, something that Alderman Curry brought up initially, these partitions. And I've seen these establishments doing it on their own, and some of the newer ones that have come in are doing a very nice job of partitioning. And also, some of them have their own rooms. So, they're really keeping them away from, you know, the other areas of their facilities. I'd like to try to, I know we have many out there that, you know, they have the roped-off area that he mentioned, and it's, it's not as appealing in regard to a visual when you're in that, that place. So, I'd like to try to see if that can be something that's looked at in the future also, that we have those, those guidelines available. That's all I have.
Alderman?
So, this is, this is just a truly challenging...
So this is, this is just a truly challenging proposition before us. And I think because the state put some hardship on us, combining the gaming with the liquor license. And I suspect, I suspect they had to put it with something, but it's a challenge for us because of the very reason the mayor brought up that, you know, we have this, you know, potential for a great new business comes in and says, you know, restaurant and they want a liquor license, which of course I, is appropriate, but is the gaming, not necessarily. Do I think we have enough? Yes, I do. It's not, yeah. I understand what, I think what Alderman Curry is trying to point out with the creation of a new class of license that would be for video gaming parlors. The problem that I see with that, I suspect that's what you're alluding to, is that how do you define that? Because they could come in and tell us one thing, and then as it built, it's built out now, then we can go back in and have that discussion with them. But the full restaurant, I think, makes more sense, and I think we're at that point. My question is, if there is some type of unique situation, can they come in and request a variance? I, I don't know, on something like this.
I think when they were referring to a variance, they were referring to a variance whereby we create the obstruction by a moratorium.
Yes.
Or some sort of limit on the, right, the permits. It would be a variation to that, is what we were talking about. Which is, it's not really a variance. I mean, we, we put limits on liquor licenses now. We have to move those numbers, which is a variance to our ordinances as they exist.
So the one thing about, so the Class C, the package only, we don't allow, which is kind of like.
It's not we don't allow it.
The statement, right, well. Yeah. You know, so that's like, that full kitchen kind of would restrict different types of businesses, us getting into different types of businesses that would potentially allow it.
For, right.
And so, I, you know, I think there's been some discussion with the fact that, you know, our, our revenue has been significant. And that's great for us as a city. We're struggling with, you know, trying to get money for roads and capital improvement. And we need revenue, but do we want to keep on building the revenue in this fashion? And I would say, no, it's nice, it's great that we have what we have. But there are facilities in a variety of different types of locations now where, you know, whether it be a video parlor, or whether it be a restaurant, there's options for people to go to places now. But I wouldn't want to ever do anything that would restrict potential development that we're trying to actually bring into the community.
You know, one of the, one of the options, other than the full kitchen that I mentioned briefly, was I wrote up an ordinance for this city with a minimum square footage. We were trying to, as a staff, we were trying to determine what your average parlor requires as a maximum square footage. They don't want more, they just want their storefront. I don't know what that number is, but could have a moratorium on liquor licenses with space of less than blank. But what was pointed out is we have bars, full bars.
That are.
That are smaller.
Right, so, so what are other communities doing to, I mean, that were twelfth is astonishing. I mean, that's, that's scary to me. But then how are these other communities restricting it and not hurting themselves by allowing potential restaurants that they want to come in and we want to come in? How are they doing that? How are they restricting?
I haven't done that research.
Okay, you don't know. So it's, I feel like we're in a no-win situation.
Even if you do square footage, I'm afraid a lot of the people that we talked to, they would, they would, they would pay for three thousand square feet.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
They'll buy the kitchen.
Right, right. And I was just going to say, they would put a kitchen in for twenty-five thousand because it's a good return. I mean, it's a no-brainer, so. Alderman, go.
Yeah, one of the things as far as some of the municipalities, and I'm not saying all, you know, I don't study them, but a lot of our southern county cities basically have major highways, like Crystal Lake has always been very successful because of Route fourteen. El Ghannqu went, Lincoln Hills, very successful because of Rackow Road. That type of traffic counts on those roads bring bigger businesses, bigger name businesses to shopping areas like the El Ghannqu Commons and all that. We don't have that. What would have been our savior would have been F A P four twenty. If that had ever gone true, we would have been a, a major player because of the roadways that we have. Fortunately, we don't have those type of counts that they have. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, and I know Alderman Sandy started this as far as, you know, when developers come in, to some extent, I think everything needs to be negotiable. And one of the reasons is, is if you remember, and I think, if I remember right, I think Alderman Curry was the one that had the discussions more so about video gaming with Ricky Rockets. And if you remember, never did he say he didn't have to have them, but he said that they were built into his business plan. Assuming that, needless to say, without them, that they wouldn't be able to make the business more pure in the country. And that's, was kind of, not a direct threat that they wouldn't come in, but kind of a hint that, yeah, well, that's part of the, the profits that we had figured on if we were to develop here, because they were, of course, investing significant millions of dollars into our community. So it's something that we always have to look at when we're looking at developers as far as when they come in.
I think that's the second question they ask us when we're sitting in a room is, do you allow gaming? So I mean, I think, right, I mean, that's a big, that's a big question. Alderman Schaefer?
I, just to touch on Alderman Lab's comment too, the Ricky Rockets guy was also bringing it up too. You have to remember, he is also an owner of a gaming company. He sells games. And gets very profitable from that. So you have to take a look, and that's where staff has to also understand what the background is on, on people that are looking to do this. But he also was looking at it not just for his fueling and car wash. He was looking at it for his three other locations there that were in his district.
There were three also.
Yeah. But I know you had asked about other municipalities also. I don't know if Alderman Sandy was leading towards this, but that they require people to, you can get a gaming license after your business has been established a certain amount of years. So they, there's all kinds of, I don't want to say games that they can play, but things that they can do to have established for different rules, so to speak. And it's all dependent upon if you want to challenge those and say, well, that's not part of the state statute, but it's part of our municipal code, our municipal statute for getting gaming approved. So there are different things you can do. The square footage, one I always thought was, would be the easiest thing. But the other, the other thing you got to take a look at is this is almost, it has spurred other development because of, if you look at, we have local business people who have established businesses who are in the liquor business, selling packaged liquors, who have now re-established other buildings because they wanted to get into the gaming side. And one of them is going to be at the brand, you know, the McDonald's with what, I believe that Sam owns that property. And does he also own Three Queens?
Yes.
Yeah, I look at those. He's, he's established and grown those businesses aside from his business. So with what's already existing, if people want to have gaming, they can start another business. Like he, he's set the example of, if you really want to have gaming, and gaming is your idea of something that you want to have, and you're a business person, you can by all means start one under the rules and regulations that already apply and not even have to go through any type of, you know, special request. He's a perfect example of that.
Yeah. Alderman, comment?
I forgot, I also want to mention, Alderman Curry mentioned this. And I do agree that if, it's hard to say no. And it would be easier if we had a clear definition ourselves. But we can't even, you know, agree on what that definition should be. And so I think therein lies the struggle, you know, when individuals have differences, the, the council had, you know, struggles with what are other communities doing? I think the state, again, hate to say this, but we, you know, the state really has put a burden on us linking it with the liquor license, because sometimes we want an establishment to have a liquor license, but we don't want the gaming. And they're, and, and I think general public doesn't always understand the fact that they're linked hand in hand, so.
Why don't we go back as a staff, Doug, and go back and see if we can find examples where cities and villages have adopted restrictions on liquor licenses that touch on gaming indirectly or directly, that have either been, that either haven't been challenged, or they have been challenged, it's even better because they're in a better direction. And bring back what someone's already written, instead of maybe trying to reinvent the wheel. Because we're not that big in the state, somebody had to have done this. Aprilville, Jaber, somebody. This isn't the first discussion this ever been had. Every town in this county's done this. Every single town that I'm aware of has had these discussions, but I don't know that any have restricted.
Alderman Curry?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. The reason I, I had mentioned earlier, looking at whatever form it takes of income, is it gets at the activity. Whereas you talk about kitchens or you talk about square footage, and there are some communities around here have tried square footage. You're not getting at the actual activity that you're, you're, you want to look at. So if you look at income or revenue, or however you want to determine, and you, and you set something based on that, you're getting at, you're defining what that business's reason for existence is. And, and I would make them report every year. You lose it if, if you essentially, you know, someone indicated, well, they can tell us anything. Yeah, that's true, anybody can tell us anything, but you know, you tend to get in trouble when you do that, so. So that's why I kind of keep coming back to that, because it's something that gets at the actual activity that you're trying to.
So, so that, that would be like a liquor license would be issued and then reviewed and revoked if the gaming revenue exceeds blank?
Sure. Percent.
Percent.
Percent of their, of their.
Percent of the whole, sure.
Seventy percent.
That's, that's their establishment then. Their establishment now is, it's just a gaming establishment.
Don't we have something similar, David, for packaged liquor when we have?
Yeah, we've kept away from that, but we might still, that might still be in the code.
I think it is, don't we?
We have a liquor license based on fifty percent.
I know we've talked about it for like BP when they were changing their footprint and stuff.
The numbers, the numbers can be the numbers, I just threw a number out there, but you know, we'd have to look at that. The other thing I did want to mention is the twelfth, and I might have missed one, maybe we're thirteenth, I don't know, we're twelve or thirteenth. I did this back when we discussed before, when we were fifteenth at that time. So we're actually still growing. I mean, we're moving up in the state, slowly, maturely, so. All right, thank you.
All right.
Doug, you got that?
We got that. We, we also have twenty out of sixty establishments that could have it that don't, so.
You're right.
Just showing the other side of the coin.
We might, we might be fifth next year.
Alderman Sandy?
He just, Alderman Curry just brought it up, whether he likes it as a positive or negative. I mean, yeah, we're still growing. And I know it's not the best type of growth, let's say, but it's still moving in a positive direction. And, and I think at the end of the day, it's the constituents, it's the people that live here who make the decision on how they want to spend their recreational dollar. And they deserve that choice. That's all I have.
At this time, I'll open up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment or input on this item?
How are you doing? Joel Dordy, lifelong resident, business owner at McKenry. Before you make a negative opinion on gaming, I'd like you to consider all the benefits that gaming can bring to the city and the much-needed things it can help us to afford. Therefore, bring a great quality of life that our residents of this city, McKenry. It can be done in a good way. You know, our streets are probably the worst I've seen ever. And I'd like to maybe propose taking the funds from gaming to our streets. And if people say we have too much gaming, we have too poor of streets. You know, maybe that could be helpful if anyone feels any pressure in saying we have too much gaming. You know, because we've got to make it up somewhere, because some other items that come up, if you're a business owner, you know, fifteen dollar an hour wages are coming. The next foreseeable future, very hard on businesses. It gets harder every year to bring customers into the brick and mortar stores. So this, the person actually walks in this store, they're not like Walmart where you can now drive up to Walmart, pick up your groceries, no longer needed to go into the store. Those kind of places are growing more and more. You got, what is it, Dine, the Dash, or whatever that is, where they bring the food to your house. Any of the Applebee's, any of those type of things, you can drive right up to them. And this is all going to continue. These, the new generation likes things that you can drive up to, they're delivered to them. Getting people out of the cars is getting to be harder and harder to do. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of people come into McKenry to spend their money, and they'll pay for our streets. You know, versus us, you know, throwing a real estate tax at them or, you know, any other kind of taxes. I know we just raised the sales tax up. And that's on the right gist, because it's the McKenry area that's paying that. And it's not the, it's not hammering the residents of the, of the town. I do like Alderman Curry's couple of statements of, you know, making the, the gaming room away from, you know, the regular customers that would go into a place. That does make a lot of sense to me. I like the signage, you know, where maybe you don't have signage. If you have the gaming, maybe it won't be like it's so in your face. A lot of people say that, you know, I drive down the street, so obviously it's gaming. Well, you know, maybe we don't need it on the fronts of the buildings. Maybe we need it inside the buildings. You know, then bring the people in the buildings and, and, you know, shelter it. You know, some of the things that were brought up, maybe forget about the beer and just limit it to wine. You know, that might be a good suggestion. And if, you know, we have too many gaming licenses, that was brought up a couple of times. How about, they're a hundred and fifty dollars now, make each machine, you know, five hundred, seven fifty, a thousand dollars. You know, maybe that would be helpful. But, you know, if we play this right, I think we can all win on, on this. If you guys. If you guys pick the right places to have them and put it to the right category of spending, like the streets, and, you know, trust the businesses that you give it to, and I think we'll all win. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. All right, so we'll have staff do some research, come back with some information in upcoming council meetings, so. Thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is vape shops. I added this to it, why not? Since we're talking about gaming, I just noticed a, a couple vape shops that have just recently opened up. There's, you know, new moratorium on them. You know, is it our choice to allow or not allow vape shops? I don't know. You know, I, I wanted to give council's opinion on the, on this subject. I think, I think it needs to be discussed. As the legalization of marijuana comes into play at, at down the road, are we going to be looking at more facilities like this popping up quickly? And, and are we ready for that? So versus the gaming, I, I think we should probably get on, on the same page on vape shops, in my opinion. So, open up for discussion by council first. Alderman, comment?
So I just recently, within the last couple of weeks, there's been some research that has come out about how damaging that is on everyone, but especially because it's typically marked toward the teenage years and early twenties, and how it's changing their brain chemistry. And so that, you know, that's very alarming. And yet, on the flip side of it, so, so obviously I wouldn't want to restrict, right? But on the flip side of it, then, you know, same as can be said of alcohol, of cigarettes. You know, my mom started smoking when she was, you know, in early teens and now is on oxygen full time and has like 25% lung and heart capacity. I mean, her quality of life is ruined. That's where the, this vaping can also have an impact on long-term quality of life. And yet, are we as a community, as a council, are we responsible for making those restrictions? I don't know the answers to this. So, you know, I'm glad you brought it up for a discussion. I don't have an easy answer, just like with the video gaming. Again, hard call.
Any other comments? Alderman, go ahead.
Yeah, basically, are there any kind of restrictions or laws or whatever written state statutes, anything as far as vape shops?
Not definitely restricting.
Nothing restricting, so. In a vape shop, they can pretty much smoke anything they want. I mean, with, that's legal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant the other way around. There's nothing restricting, you're restricting vape shops.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So I think your, your ability to regulate this is much broader than gaming.
You know, it's amazing, and I just learned this a couple of weeks ago too, is as far as these vape smokers that, what they're basically inhaling. And again, I'm a smoker, I have been for 49 years. But they're actually taking like a peanut oil or something into their lungs, and that's what's actually clodding up their lungs. I'm sure that's a lot worse than the nicotine and tobacco that I've taken for all these years. And I pray to God that I'm not in a condition that, with that, so. And again, it's, it was my choice many years ago. But I think to some extent, you know, can we make it, is it a conditional use now? Vape shops, we make it a conditional use and we just look at it as, as far as, I'm sorry.
There's no, there's no restriction whatsoever.
So what I'm saying is, we make it a conditional use on vape shops, just like we did with tattoo. As far as whether or not, I, I don't have a problem with a vape shop as, as long as it isn't in specific areas that are standing out in the middle of established shopping centers that are looking for, again, a good mix of stores, because one will complement the other. And then if you put vape, vape shops in there, of course, the landlord just wants to rent the place, doesn't care about anything else.
That's where they're at.
Yeah, well, and that's why maybe we need to look at just conditional use and whether or not we feel it's proper in the location that it goes, so.
Actually, what the mayor had suggested to me last week was to come up with a moratorium while we make this decision to, to promote, based on the health restriction or health issues that have been raised recently. And I think there's some safety issues as far as the device itself, didn't want it to start on fire.
Exploded.
Yeah, so, so I've actually drafted a more, an ordinance imposing a moratorium of an undetermined time at this stage while we can consider this, because they could come in at any moment with more vape shops. So his direction to me anyway, for a draft ordinance for the next meeting, was to propose a moratorium while we come up with a solution. The zoning, that's a zoning issue if we go with the conditional use. We need to go through a zoning hearing, and that'll all take time.
Alderman, Santee?
I'm comfortable. I'm with Attorney McConnell in regards to making that statement. I'm definitely comfortable looking at, looking at establishing that and bringing it back to, to council more moratorium for our next meeting.
Alderman Shaffer?
Hi, one question and one observation. This, this one has personally hit home for me, but I, I wanted to have the chief chime in on this a little bit, 'cause I know from, from a legal issue, it's been a rather, in McHenry schools, especially at the middle school and the high school level, it's been an increasing issue. And it's, the police are involved because the deans of students actually call them to come in. And I know that that's been a thing. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if you have numbers on that kind of stuff, but you may know that it's been trending a certain way.
I did take a look at some of the numbers after we spoke earlier this evening. First of all, the, the whole e-cigarette and vaping, it's regulated by the state. It's regulated for a reason for minors, is because there's health complications to it. There's no, if, no doubt about it. So taking a look at that, it is a concern for where are we going with our community in the future. In 2018, we handled 89 complaints of juveniles involved with either a smoking violation or, or a cigarette or a vaping device. Eight of those occurred at the middle school, and two of them occurred at Parkland in 2018. So, and then the majority of them actually occurred at our high schools. So we've been, we've been targeting vaping at, at the high school level for some time now. We're actually, we're actually gonna participate in a symposium at West Campus on vaping on March 14th for that, that, this, this topic of conversation alone. So we're gonna try to educate the students and anybody from the public, parents that wanna come, on what are the risks in getting involved in vaping as opposed to the old days with traditional tobacco usage.
Thank you. And the other thing, there's no regulation on, these are sold not only at vape stores. You can get them ultimately online, you can buy them at grocery stores, you can buy them at liquor stores, you can buy them at gas stations. So I don't know if you're ever gonna be able to stop something like this, other than through, you know, us moratorium on them. You might limit the number in the city of McHenry, but it, it again is like Alderman McCondon said, it's a very tough issue to eliminate, but I understand what you're trying to do. So I would agree too, as Alderman Santee said, on a moratorium as you figure out what to do.
Alderman, go ahead.
But then if we create a moratorium, I mean, you're gonna have a description and a definition of what we consider a vape shop. I mean, it's other than just saying vape shop, you know, I mean, makes it a little bit more difficult to, just to say, well, you got a moratorium.
Yeah, I think I'd use the defined terms, I'll go back and, the defined terms in the statute are what they are.
Okay. Have there been recent requests for more?
They don't have to come to us.
They don't request.
Okay.
That's, that's my concern.
So enforcement's gonna be an issue on the moratorium, but it is possible.
I didn't ask you this, but with the moratorium, can, if they, someone does come to us, can we allow it? Not, I don't even think that would happen, but let, let's say.
No.
No.
No, not if the council prohibits it.
Why?
They would have to come in and get a fair answer from the moratorium.
Right, that's right.
I mean, the problem, why, don't you have a problem as far as the fact that you have businesses out there that are opened up, that are not licensed, because they're not required to be licensed, as vape shops?
Well, no, we, we regulate, we do issue.
Yeah, we do issue licenses, just like with cigarettes. And we, we give occupancies for, for the occasional store and cigarette licenses, so we treat them like cigarettes.
So we know where they are.
Okay, we do. So in other words, they do have a license?
Right, and, and an occupancy.
So if a vape shop comes in, they have to be licensed as well as occupancy?
Right.
Okay. Did not know that, all right.
Any other comments? Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a public comment or input on this subject? John? Ken? So at this time, is everyone comfortable bringing it back for a moratorium at this point?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Before we move to executive session, I'd like to go to staff reports, since we do have public here. So we'll go to staff reports. Are there any staff reports this evening? Chief?
Council saw the email they put out, we managed to bang out two more squad cars last week. Thankfully, our officers were not hurt significantly. They're, they're both still out, but we're expecting them to come back to work here hopefully first party next week. And maybe we'll bring an agenda item back to council in the near future. I apologize, I had a problem with the weather.
Thanks, chief. Any other staff reports? None? I'll go ahead and do mayor's, city council comments. I think it's only right, since there is public here, whoever watches these YouTube videos, I just wanna apologize on behalf of the e-blast that went out, not from the city email, it was from a Constant Contact account that I have with six other accounts on it. I have since separated all accounts and went through each email. I guess there's still a few out there that we need to retract, but unfortunately had a, an issue with Constant Contact on my end, my air, I'm taking total heat for it, and that's fine. That's why they put erasers on pencils, everyone makes mistakes. And mistakes don't happen if you're not doing anything. So I think, you know, if this is the first mistake, and will be the last regarding e-blasts. So I just wanna publicly apologize and, you know, and move on. So at this point, I am never mentioning this subject again. But I wanted to apologize to the city council, and Alderman Glad, and everybody else in the staff as well, 'cause it doesn't look good on the entire city, so. I apologize for that. So, moving on, is there any city council comments? See none? All right, this time, when I enter executive session, I, at this time, I'd ask all of you to leave the room for a short executive session regarding 5ILCS 120-2, C2, collective bargaining matters. I'll make a motion. Alderman Santee will make the motion. Second? Alderman Curry?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Mehavik?
Yes.
Alderman By?
Yes.
Alderman Cat?
Yes.
Thanks, council. Roll call?
Alderman Cat?
Here.
Alderman By?
Here.
Alderman Mehavik?
Here.
Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Shaffer?
Here.
Alderman Haya?
There.
Alderman Santee?
There.
Mayor Jack?
Here.